I'll go get you this time, like last time.
I'm surprised they didn't tell me the video cast.
Wow, they could watch the stream.
The January twenty-second work session for the Martin County Board of Education is called the order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this opportunity to come together and just discuss the business of our schools. Father, please guide us through our conversations tonight. May all we say and do bring honor and glory to you for this prayer in your son's name.
All right, we need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moving.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Information items, K-5 curriculum adoption, Andrea Lilly and Kim Willey.
Good evening. We are here tonight to discuss with you the K-5 curriculum adoption that we have been working on during that White's tours early on in Martin County for her. She taught with many teachers and throughout that process she found that there were teachers who were asking for new curriculum materials. And so we jumped on that in June and July and started exploring all our K-5 curriculum options and for ELA. And tonight we have a presentation ready for you to give you the outcome of that curriculum adoption process that we've been working on. And first up tonight, I'd like to introduce you Kim Lilly, our K-5 director.
Can you click the link for camera, please? Thank you. Okay, so our timeline, last spring at some point, the former director, they had done some curriculum exploration. In the spring, they had brought in different resources. These ladies, along with some of the other educators, had looked through some of those resources. After springtime, kind of halted a little bit, you know, we had some turnover and things like that, some new vision and things. So in, if you look at, once you get to the next slide there, July eighteenth, we brought in K-8 ELA curriculum leaders. And these were leaders that were identified by the principals. And so what they did that day, they looked at, we went over them, kind of what the curriculum adoption process would be. We also brought out EdReports, which is an evaluation tool that we use to evaluate curriculum.
What did you call that?
Um, Ed Reports.
Ed Reports.
Um, we also looked at different rubrics that we would use to evaluate curriculum. We looked at some that were Science Reading line that were also brought in that DPI is using to kind of look at that curriculum. Then in, in that day, they kind of looked through ten options that were already brought in previously to BeStar. Then in August, we brought in the teams again. They also spent a lot of time heavily developing pacing guides, as you are aware, to go with their iReady curriculum as well. During that time, they also looked at narrowing those options that they looked at previously. And then we brought in some additional knowledge building curriculums that are kind of well-known right now. So that brought us from ten options to seven options. And then the teacher leaders spent quite a bit of time in September and October really focusing on pacing development. So our curriculum exploration kind of stalled a little bit because we really needed the teachers to come out of the classroom to develop pacing guides. So in November, kind of the end of October, we brought in some more exploration where they looked into the resources, they used the rubric to evaluate. And then in November, we tallied up their rubric scores and found out what those top four choices were. Once we determined the top four choices that they, along with their twenty-five other ELA leaders, determined were the top four, I then talked with the curriculum companies. We organized for them to come in to do some vendor presentations with the teachers. So each vendor had like an hour to kind of present their curriculum, offer some Q and A. Then these leaders, along with their grade level counterparts, evaluated and talked through all the pieces of those curriculum pieces. Then from there, and that was again just the twenty-five ELA leaders.
I can ask you something. Is it just textbooks or what is it that they were looking at?
So it, this is kind of like more of a basal, which encompasses a lot of different uses. And we're going to go over the exact uses.
Okay.
And then from there, because we were working with just the leaders, we really wanted to involve all of the teachers. So we had two sessions. One was on the fifth in the afternoon. That was for one of the top choices. We went from four choices to two. And then on the afternoon, the eleventh was the other second top choice. We did have a lower turnout for that. So what we did was, we ended up sending the recordings as well as the resources and the links to all the teachers to make sure that the other fifty-some teachers could look and explore as well. Then on December eighteenth, all the teachers in K-5 were to submit their votes for their top choice out of those top two. And then we ended up having about twenty-seven teacher votes. And we felt that through some discussion that we really wanted to make sure we had more input from teachers. You know, December was a busy month. You know, you're sending them things to review. So what we did was, last month, or just last week, during the district Y and PLCs, we actually brought forth the vote again to all the teachers to make sure that we had voice from all leaders. So on the fifteenth, the sixteenth, we ended up having fifty-six teacher votes. And now these ladies, I really appreciate them. They are just two of our twenty-five that explored all the curriculum. And I'm thankful for them because today was a no teacher day, a no teacher day. So I appreciate them coming out today. I'm going to introduce Mary Taylor. She's a kindergarten teacher. And then Mary Corby Green. They're going to talk to a little bit about the top choice.
Thank you all for allowing us to come and present to you tonight. On this slide, you will see that there is a link to the K-5 PDF. The PDF where you can see all of the digital and print components for each grade level. Some of these pictures on the slides are not quite as clear as we would like for them to be. So you can just click on that.
Oh, my eyes will mess up again.
You can just click on that and zoom in, and hopefully it'll clear up for you a little bit. So for kindergarten, first and second grade, there are a range of digital and print components that are available for teachers and students. For kindergarten, this includes whole group resources, a variety of trade books, big books to enhance the read aloud experience, reader's theater, writing practice, and there are even songs to go along with each of the units.
So is this what y'all selected?
Yes, ma'am.
So what's the publishing company?
Benchmark Advanced.
What?
Benchmark Advanced.
Oh, okay.
Across all of the K-2 resources, the digital platform has helpful tools for school and home. When we reviewed this, teachers really liked how there's an activity calendar that can be sent home with students to extend those learning opportunities and to engage the entire family while they're at home. There are also consumables for students that will be used in the classroom and also sent home at the end of each unit.
And I'm sure it's got computer access and all that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And on the images, if you go to the link and you zoom in, you'll see kind of like a little arrow like the mouse, and that just shows what piece of the curriculum is digital.
While all of the components for K-2 are very similar, teachers did agree that the diverse and the culturally affirming texts mixed along with the knowledge building topics will keep students engaged year after year. Throughout the K-2, throughout K-2, Benchmark Advanced has created a purposeful progression of learning with their digital and print components.
And you'll hear a lot of the same things for 3-5. The 3-5 teachers agreed that the digital and the print components all covered the skills that our students need in their reading core. The components include whole group, spelling, vocabulary, writing. We really liked that there was intervention set there with it, small groups, and even assessments. All the texts that we viewed, because it's a lot of books, as you can see, hopefully if you click on that PDF, but they were all just, all varied, which is great. And we thought the students would enjoy it. The small group libraries that will be available was also a really big selling point for us. Some even include Reader's Theater, which I know you heard with Mary Taylor, which will be a really big help in 3-5 for students that still struggle with fluency especially. But all included knowledge building topics to be cross-curricular with science and social studies, which is definitely a plus.
Are we going to let some of these books go home for the parents to help them read too, or does it all stay at school?
Sure. The student has a consumable that has texts that go with the theme of the unit. So when they finish that unit, that can be a piece that will go home.
Uh-huh.
So at the end of the year, they'd have ten of those booklets, because there's ten units.
And I'm sure this is based on North Carolina's standard course of study, right? This is great.
And the other thing that we really liked that this company has is the whole hybrid learning aspect where it does have the digital and the print components, or teacher resources, for assessments, anything that we would need for obviously this day and age. And it would, they even have ebooks, multimedia, assessments, reports, all of that. So it's all could go into virtual like at any second if we needed to.
When's the last time we've purchased something in Martin County? Yeah, I mean, it's been ages, hasn't it?
It would be the iReady curriculum, which really isn't as comprehensive as what they purchase now. But we've had iReady downloads at least two thousand seventeen.
And I know looking through some book rooms, how many some principals bring out some book rooms to receive some Scotts, Forsman, which I think was here when I was sitting here fifteen years ago.
Oh, sure, sure. And we were able to use textbook money for this, I guess. Or is there textbook money?
Well, there, we do have some textbook money, but we also could use some extra money for this.
Okay, good.
Just real quick, we want to hit on some of the highlights of Benchmark Advanced 2022. It does have three-week unit topics. So there are ten units, and each of those units is three weeks long. It does include spiral instruction, a gradual release model. And like I mentioned earlier, it does have that layer knowledge from previous grade levels. So what they learn in kindergarten will travel within to first grade and to second grade and so on. It does a very good job integrating science and social studies, all of those standards. Yes, it's awesome. There's a very good balance between informational text and literary text, it's a fifty-fifty. It does have varied text sets, genres and of different lengths. It has an explicit vocabulary routine to teach that specific vocabulary, define example, and then the ask routine is how they describe it. And then there are also a ton of small group resources. I think there's for each unit, I know for kindergarten, I think there's nine books for each small group unit. So that's ninety books. First grade, I believe it's hundred and twenty books. And second grade goes back to ninety.
And all of the books for small group have a Lexile level, which is very common. You hear that a lot. And then also there's like a little, kind of like a little lesson plan to go with it that digs into the knowledge.
So all of our students across Martin County will be doing the same thing?
K-5.
Hallelujah. Been a long time since that's happened. The teachers have gotten to be typical to death.
With Benchmark Advanced 2022, there's also text-based process writing, which will be very helpful in the classrooms. It also scaffolds and it differentiates very well. There are appropriate assessments that go on with each unit. It has that home-to-school connection, the activity calendar that I mentioned a little bit earlier, where the whole feeling can get involved and engaged. And then there is plenty of professional development that is needed to help us make sure that our implementation of this is successful.
Now, we won't start this until next year, right?
August.
Well, how we start developing some pacing in June throughout summer.
And then the next slide is just what teachers said, why they liked it, why they chose it. And most teachers felt that with the variety of texts and components, Benchmark Advanced will be the best to support all parts of our ELA block. And it really was the only product that was the most closely aligned with the Science of Reading, which is what all the counties are trying to go towards, backs up what we're learning in letters, all of that. And like Mary Taylor said, just all the topics keep building on each other. So, you know, if one student is at EJ Hayes and moves to Jamesville, or vice versa, they're going to know exactly where they're supposed to be. And it's not that they've missed anything or that one school has something better or less. So it's wonderful. The resources and training that come with the program was also a very big selling point.
I predict we won't see big increases after next year. So this may not get me as propositioned yet, like.
So this just shows you the teacher vote that was on the sixteenth of January. There were fifty-six votes. So again, you can see that we had all teachers represented there. And we had forty-eight votes, which was eighty-five percent of teachers, actually eighty-six rounded up. Eighty-six percent of K-5 teachers voted for Benchmark Advanced. You'll notice that it says twenty-two after it. That's because Benchmark Advanced has a seventeen version, which was less aligned to Science of Reading. They've done a lot of improvements in it to really build it up. And so that's why we're getting the Benchmark Advanced 2022.
Great. I would thank these two ladies here tonight for coming to present, to give you an idea of everything that they had to go through to really dig in deep to select this curriculum, and to all the teachers who have worked so hard.
Well, it's going to be well worth it.
Yeah. And they really have put some time and effort into digging into the curriculum to make sure that it's exactly what we want and we thank y'all. So tonight, we are here to just share this information with you and to let you know that at the next board meeting, we will have a five-year quote available for you. We're still negotiating that with the company at this time. And we look forward to implementing this, as well as starting working on our math adoption program for K-5. That will be next.
Will that start next year, too?
We're going to begin that in June.
So we'll have another year before we do that?
Right.
Good. I don't want you to get your poor hands.
And we wanted to make sure we really implement one really well.
That's wrong. That's wrong.
It's hard to put two new implementations.
That's what I would think.
For a teacher, yeah. Any questions?
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, our next topic is the high school merger update. Dr. White and Ms. Mazel.
Mr. Look, if you'll just go to the next slide and then... Good evening, board members. We just wanted to provide you another update on where we are with the merger. First of all, we wanted to share this image. So tomorrow morning, across Riverside High School, we have special signs that we've had made. This is one of our smaller ones. But we want to make sure our students feel welcome. It says we may be two schools, but now we're one family for this semester. And so these are being put up all across Riverside High School. There'll be one outside to greet the students when they arrive that morning. And we're just doing everything possible to make sure that our students know that we're in this together. And yes, we're two schools, but this semester, we're going to work as one family and make sure everybody has what they need in order to be successful. I want to share some of the things you've been working through. And if you click that image, it'll take us to a presentation.
So one of the first things that strategically we did was when we looked at this process is we have one to two South Creek teachers on every hall. So they'll have a familiar face to feel them, make them feel welcome. On top of that, Coach Hughes will actually start his day the first two weeks helping with buses at South Creek. And he will, he will come down behind the buses or in front of the buses, beat the buses back. So they'll have another familiar face as they transition from getting off the bus at South Creek, getting on the bus to Riverside. When they get there, the first thing they will see is our two assistant principals, Mr. Stanton, Riverside High's principal, assistant principal, and you will have Mr. Keys, assistant principal of South Creek, to greet the students. As they come in the building, we have strategically placed different types of South Creek and Riverside teachers on duties on purpose to let everybody have a familiar face as they come in and enter. The first two days, Thursday and Friday, that are in person, we will have our guidance counseling team in the cafeteria, as well as our support services, our social worker, our school nurse, all hands on deck to assist students on where to go if they have any questions, to make them feel comfortable, and make sure they understand their class schedule, how the bell schedule works, and what we do. We will also have strategically, talking with Dr. White, we have support staff from the central office. They have split up gradually, been split up in shifts. They will be stationed on different hallways out during the day to assist students as well if there is a need. I don't anticipate a whole lot of commotion because like I told you guys before, a lot of these kids were already kind of here because they've taken classes here, and some of them were taking classes over there with us. Yes, ma'am?
When did they, when did they get their schedule?
So.
Or have they got it already, or are they picking it up?
So schedules, our guidance counseling team's working on schedules today. They actually came in today. They're working on it today. Tomorrow, at open house, we will have tables set up in the lobby.
So they'll pick them up tomorrow night?
They can pick them up tomorrow night. They can also go on Power School if they can't make it tomorrow night, and they can see them. And then we will strategically, as I said, on Thursday and Friday in person, our guidance counseling team will be in the cafeteria, and Ms. Griffin will be here in this cafeteria. They can go up, take a picture of the schedule with their.
Paper copies.
Paper copy, or either, about, I hate to say it this day and time, they don't, they don't really do paper copies. So they can take a picture of their schedule, and that way they have it in the halls. We do allow cell phones in the hallways. So they can, because they're going to lose paper. I hate to say it this day and time.
Well, do all of them have, all students have a cellphone?
Most of them do. The ones that don't, we will provide a paper copy. And we have, they all have devices. We have Chromebooks. So all their schedules can be emailed to them, a screenshot to them. So they'll have that option as well. But good question.
They also have the ability to pull up their schedule in Power School. They can actually log in and see their.
So they have experience with that?
Yes, ma'am. They typically, that's what we do. And we do still provide paper copies. It's just a lot of our kids prefer the digital copy.
Yeah, okay.
And now that a hundred percent of them have their own device that they keep with them all day, it's just easier for them. It's just the way they like to do business. But some of our parents prefer paper copies. So we're going to have those as well. So they'll be passed out tomorrow night. They can access them online in their Power School. They can actually log in and see that. And we'll have our student support team ready all day Thursday to work through any issues, make sure if they wanted paper and couldn't come to open house, they have it, and how to access it, all those things.
And have we advertised open house? I just want to get those parents out there.
Yes.
So actually, actually, there was another all-call that went out today. I think I've all-called five or six times to either South Creek and Riverside, or just South Creek, reminding them about the open house. I started including South Creek staff and parents on all of our stuff last week, just so they were aware. Because my biggest thing is, I want everybody to, you know, feel comfortable when they come. Because we also have Riverside High School kids that are going to have South Creek High School teachers they don't know. So that's why the open house is so important for both parties to come, correct? But that is one thing we'll do. The following week, I plan to meet with each class. I'm going to meet with both, probably both schools, all freshmen, all sophomores, and all juniors. I actually have a senior class meeting that was scheduled with just Riverside students this week, because they have early grad coming up, and discuss some things with them. And I'll meet with South Creek seniors separate at a later date, probably next week or the week after, depending on, after I communicate, you know, all this different moving pieces. But my goal is, is to treat it as one school as much as I can, because I think that's important, that they understand we're going to treat everybody the same, no matter if they're a cougar or not, they're in our building, they're a Martin County school, a high school student. No matter which school it is, it's one family. So I wanted them to see my face. I did this at the beginning of the year with every Riverside High School student. That worked really well, to kind of let them hear my story about my life and what I'm about. And I'm going to do it again. They're just going to, everybody's going to get to hear it again.
That's unique.
Correct. We also have strategically got a, we have a custodian, Mr. Farmer will be coming over from Riverside High, I meant to Riverside High from South Creek. He will be stationed at the innovative, not the regular campus. He'll be another face that they will get to see every single day. He's been assigned to the auditorium and gym area. So that's another piece. Coach Hughes is also over there. He'll be coming over. So I tried to put somebody from South Creek strategically everywhere in the building, so they have somebody they can see that they end up familiar with. As far as schedule, as you see here, we kind of went over this last time. But the schedule, I actually did an all-call today because transportation is going to be moved up some. I wanted to make sure that the South Creek parents start to hear my voice. They're probably going to get tired of it for a little while.
They need to hear.
Yeah. But we do, I did tell them that they'll have to be ready twenty minutes earlier as what bus transportation has told me. So I made that all-call today. Actually went out at five forty-five today. I have another one going out to all schools on Wednesday. And I also mentioned open house again tonight to the South Creek parents as well. But the schedule there, as far as that, I did say we have another all-call going out Wednesday night after the remote day to remind them the school starts at eight oh five in person. So anybody that's bringing their child to school, we want to make sure they're not tardy on the first day, and that they're comfortable on the process of where to go. Come through the cafeteria, make sure they understand our protocols of, because we don't really go through the front office in the morning. We come through the cafeteria because we only have one bathroom open to speed up the process for breakfast.
And also, when it comes to buses, don't forget our Here Comes the Bus app. That's something we put in place at the beginning of the year. So every parent, every student who has that app can track the bus to their house.
That would be good, Ms. Mazel, to say on your next all-call, too.
Yes. Well, I was going to mention at open house tomorrow night, but yes, I agree with you there.
Now, this is a silly question, I think. When South Creek High School students get picked up, they don't have to go to South Creek. They're going straight to Riverside, right, from their home?
Talking about in the morning. So anybody that rides the yellow bus in the morning, the way, because the middle school, South Creek Middle, is still sharing buses, they have to go to that campus first. That's why Coach Hughes will be there the first two weeks to help them get on the right bus to come to Riverside.
Well, that's causing them to have to get on the bus real early.
It's, it moves everything up about.
It's really only going to, we're asking for twenty minutes right now.
About fifteen.
But it's really not going to be, the day is actually only ten minutes difference. It's actually not that much difference. It's about ten minutes. But, you know, just this is like the beginning of the year right now, the first of the semester. So we're asking for, to be prepared for twenty minutes.
So does, does the Riverside Middle and High share buses, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we have buses that share between.
And if you'll notice on the schedule, you'll see there, there's two dismissal times. So South Creek students and us, all of the innovative campus will get out at two fifty. And so their goal, our goal was to have all South Creek students on the road at two fifty-five headed back to that end of the county. And at two fifty-five, Riverside High School kids, our buses will load, and they will leave at three. Because if we let all them buses out at one time, we're going to have a logjam. It's not the most convenient place to get out of anyway. But we have worked with law enforcement and the DOT on some different ways to get our buses to Riverside Middle and the South, South Creek Middle and South Creek High Schools on campus.
So we brought in law enforcement to our planning meetings to make sure we have the most efficient routes in order to maximize every minute. So we are going to, when we dismiss, we're actually going a different way for those buses that share, to make sure that we have been efficient with every moment. So we appreciate their support in coming to our planning meetings.
So have the middle schools been picked up yet when they leave Riverside? So, have the middle schools been picked up yet when they leave Riverside High School? They'll go to.
Right.
South Creek building and pick up the middle school students and then?
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
And all of the buses now will, instead of being placed on the campus of Riverside Middle, will be placed on our campus at Riverside High, because we're getting out earlier, and then Riverside Middle will get picked up later. And that was strategic, because the only way we could get the schedules to kind of align with the buses was to be able to do that.
Okay.
But that's pretty much in a nutshell, the schedule, nothing really changed there. We still have three lunches here, or at Riverside, and there were two lunches here at the IC, and you can see that in the next slide. There's the innovative campus, as you see there. That is two lunches, just like we have now. We've talked with Mr. Farmer, and hopefully, most of the kinks will be worked out. Of course, everything will be slowed. It's just like starting school the first week again. It's going to take us some time to work out kinks. But we'll see what works and adjust and make it, make it work.
And we're going to have lots of extra hands on both campuses. So, every person who is not assigned to a classroom is going to be there to help. So, we have half-day shifts of people that will be there to support during the whole day for two weeks. So, we will actually have half the folks there in the morning from 7:30 to 11:30. Then, the other shift will come in, and we'll have people line the hallways all day, the bridge, throughout the hallways, the different buildings, class list, homeroom list. We're actually already up this morning on the walls of the high school. So, we're prepared to make sure every student, every parent, we have a system, we got a plan in place to make sure everybody has the support that they need.
So, I'd be happy to hear that.
The open house, once again, we will have tables set up in the auditorium lobby starting at 5:30. And that will be our clubs, our student support services team. I've even, we've got, transportation will be there if there's any needs that they need. Our clubs, main thing is, will be student-led. South Creek High unfortunately didn't have an SGA at all this year. That's one of my priorities, is to get an SGA representation with our SGA. And our people will be there tomorrow night to start recruiting that process, so we can have elections hopefully in the first two to three weeks of the school, so they can get representation, and we can build this thing together through, through the rest of this year. We also will have Coach Hughes and Coach Jinks will be set up with athletics, anybody that we may have missed that has not had an opportunity to play athletics. They are going to be down here now. We got the transportation, you can hear about that next, from, from Coach Hughes and Coach McGill. And obviously, they'll be able to meet administration. And I'm not going to be the only one talking. All of our sister principals will have a piece, a slide to go over. Our support services team, our guidance counseling team will all talk, because if Ms. Griffin's not available, Ms. Whitaker is, or Ms. Stanton, I want them South Creek kids to feel comfortable. I want them to have the smoothest transition as possible, because it is a different environment from what they're accustomed to. You're used to, Robertsonville's a little bit, you know, not as busy as what's going on in Winston, so that's my main thing, is to make it smooth for them.
Now, the present, are all of them going to give presentations?
Everybody has a sign. There's one big presentation that we, well, we all made it together.
At the open house?
At 5:45, I will begin, and then I will pass it off to our. Who's assigned what?
In Martin County Auditorium.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Now, how about the parent advisory boards? How are we going to merge them?
Well, we've been functioning through school improvement teams, and so, what the state really wants us to have is a school improvement team that has parent representative on the school improvement team. So, that's the way we, we've been functioning.
But we've got parents that still think they're on the, still say they're on the South Creek Advisory Board. So, they don't know that they're.
They may be on the sit team, because we have, we have representation of parents on our sit team. I've just gotten to figure out, there's not a whole lot for me to go off of, unfortunately, from what's left at South Creek, but that is something that I definitely want to get representation with that.
From some parents from South Creek that.
Parents, staff, yeah, we need to.
And I heard the word advisory board when I came on, but it was my understanding that those boards haven't met in person in multiple years.
They think it's because of the pandemic, though.
Okay, okay.
So, there's a crisscross in communication.
Okay. All right, that's definitely something we could look at. And the first step will be to make sure we have South Creek parent representation on our school improvement team.
Absolutely.
We want them. And, and again, South, right off the gate, there's some opportunities that we're not at South Creek, that we're going to make sure they have. Like, our SGA is functioning up and running at Riverside. We're immediately going to have, we have a Riverside president, so we're going to have a South Creek student body president. We've got a vice president, we're going to have a South Creek vice president. The clubs, unfortunately, there were no clubs at South Creek. As they walk in tomorrow night to open house, they're going to be able to sign up for all the different club opportunities at Riverside, to make sure that, you know, we now have opportunities for all of our children. They're just greater and even better than what we've had in the past. As far as the flow of open house, was there anything else you want to say about that before we get into it?
Um, no, the flow of open house, I've asked in the all-call for everyone to start at Riverside, because the presentation is going to be at 5:45. I know it's a tight window, and then if they can do what they need to do at Riverside. And then, Mr. Guard will be over here to greet parents and families, and Ms. Cottle will leave the meeting there and come here for anyone that's early college or has an IC class for the CTE.
I thought you have an open house here, too?
Yes, ma'am.
We have to, because our students, we're, we are on both of these campuses all day. So, most of the students that go to Riverside High School also are on this campus. Remember, we talked about how there's about 600.
You talked about that for open house, okay.
Yeah, there's about 600 students on this campus every single day, which is amazing, because that means that we're getting those credentials. Compared to last year, we only had about 100 students on this campus, and this year, we're at like 560 last semester. So, both campuses will be open, so that parents can come and see, and if they have classes in both places, they'll be able to meet everyone.
I was disappointed at South Creek's early graduation, that only two students had the skills test passed, the work read.
Work keys.
What did he call it?
Now, I can speak, speak on that real quick, is we did not have a lot, I think there was only, don't quote me, there was less than 10 that actually took the test this time. So, it's probably going to be at the end of the year, where you're going to see the big bulk of who got what credentials. Because a lot of them aren't taking the test until the end of the year.
Until the end of the year. Even if they were going to graduate?
No, that, that's the early grads, is what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
They have to have enough, excuse me, they have to have enough courses to qualify to take the career readiness test. So, their schedule, they don't.
We let them graduate early, they don't have enough courses to.
Well, they have the courses that they need to graduate, but not the completers and CTEs, because it's their choice. It's elected, so it's their choice that they're going to take that or not.
I will say that we are trying to really up our marketing with CTE, hence the 100 to 600 on this campus.
That showed me right there, we're still not reaching there, but.
We, well, to be a completer, you have to take multiple courses, so you're not just going to see that in six months. But like, that's the difference from that 100 last year of students on this campus to almost 600 this year.
Right, right.
So, you're going to see that in years to come, because you have to take multiple courses in the same area in order to be that completer. So, it's coming. You're going to see our numbers go up in that.
Sure.
Because that's something that we're really working hard on, is our credentialing and our early college. But early college isn't just for those early college students. It's for those students who want to graduate, weren't ready, with a skill or a trade. And so, that's something that we are just working really hard on, and the innovative middle school is even going to be feeding into that with the programs and the STEM lab that we're offering there. We're going to see a big difference with that. That's a great point, and something that we are really focused on and working on to increase those numbers.
And the other thing that you'll see is that with your innovative middle school, that's going to market you even more as you go forward. And you'll see, and when these eighth graders especially, you should see a lot of kids, I mean, you'll see an increase, but you're really going to see it, because we're putting money into the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade innovative program for the pathways to be there for the kids.
But it's a shame to graduate early and then not be workplace-ready.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's their choice.
But the flow of open house, after, basically after my presentation, to open up our building, they can go see their teachers. I have strategically, we have put both logos on every single sign, every single room number is numbered with the teacher that's assigned there. It has the, the knight and the cougar on the logo. I had that upgraded this past week. Our media coordinator did a great job doing that this most. So, that is done. And then, the main thing is, is that I want them to just get used to the building, because I think I shared this with Dr. White, and I shared with y'all. I was a football coach at South Creek. I had never been in Riverside High School's building until I got this job. So, it's important that they understand that that building is unique, the way it's designed. I want to make sure they're comfortable. That's the main thing. And then, you want to talk about impact on Riverside?
Yeah, so, as far as, and I know we went over this last time, but it's a lot of information, so I want to make sure everybody has it. It's only about a 10-minute difference that it's going to change for our day. We're asking for 20 right now in the mornings, because we want to be prepared. We, we want kids to be early, not late. But really, when you get down to it, and you look at the actual minutes, you're looking at 10 to 15 minutes of a change, which we felt like was very, very minimal. And all the principals were at the table when we were talking about this, including our middle school principals, Ms. Rushing, to make sure that we're all on the same page. And this is going to be a very minimal impact. As far as the move, all teachers have been moved. There's just a few odd events. Today was an unscheduled day, but maintenance has moved all teachers who needed to be moved. They have been moved. They have been so positive and such team players. Every single teacher who had to move was assigned a moving assistant. So, we took every person at central office, anybody who's not a full-time teacher in a classroom, and we assigned them to support the move. So, for example, Ms. Nguyen is a teacher who had to move from South Creek to Riverside. So, she was given a personal assistant to use as needed, and basically, we told our, our folks, our students, drop everything and be their assistant. So, go help them get organized, help them set up their room, unpack, move from this place to the other place, and our team has been amazing about that.
Did some of the Riverside people have, the staff have to move, too?
We had our alternative learning program moved to South Creek full-time. And the only other one that had, we had two teachers move. One requested a move.
Oh, okay.
To another classroom to be closer to her department.
Uh-huh.
And it just happened to work out.
Right.
And the other one is moving from upstairs to downstairs, our theater arts teacher, so he will be closer to the auditorium now and not upstairs.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Well, that's good. Okay.
So, tomorrow, we will finish up the move. Maintenance has been great. I just want to give a huge shout-out to Maintenance for all their support. There was a move schedule, and it's actually linked in the presentation for you guys, and it was also shared in your weekly update. There was a move schedule, and that's what we followed. They went in, got everybody moved. They have their personal assistants, and they're still supporting them. So, the assistance doesn't go away. The personal assistant to support the setup and anything that they need is theirs for the next indefinitely. So, they're our priority, and it's gone very, very well. So, thank you to Maintenance, thank you to the teachers, and to all of our staff. We really have exemplified the whole one team, one dream. We're all of us together.
So, Thursday is the first day of second semester?
Yes. We have a remote day scheduled for Wednesday.
So, our, our remote day, one thing we tried to figure out was, is some of the kids, we won't see them till Thursday, because they won't come to open house, you know, and some of them just don't do a good job of, I'm going to go to school, and I got to go to school. So, what I did is, we had our support services team come up with a assignment school-wide that the kids have to complete on Wednesday.
You got that?
The remote.
That's Wednesday?
Yes, yes, ma'am. The remote learning day. The other thing I wanted to do is, I'm not meeting with, I'm meeting with the whole group, so I had some trainings already scheduled for our staff, with South Creek's had a couple of them, like the insurance and stuff, so they can go ahead and go back to their classroom and work. And I'm, I'm giving South Creek High School staff, I'm not really meeting with them with the nuts and bolts of stuff until Wednesday at 1:00, to give them time to kind of get their room set up, make sure they got everything they need from the other school, if they need to go back and forth to South Creek Wednesday morning to get some final things, you know, because I mean, some of those teachers have been there a long time. That's a lot of stuff to be moved, to make sure they got everything that they need to, to be ready on Thursday at 8:05.
So, the open house is Wednesday, no?
Tomorrow night, Tuesday night.
Tuesday night. Open house is Tuesday night. We have a remote learning day on Wednesday.
Well, I thought it's O-H or the 23rd?
It looks like to me, the, the, well, the day, I see what you're saying. The day of the Sundays, it's not, it's supposed to be Monday.
So, open house is tomorrow night?
Yes, ma'am.
Open house is tomorrow night, yes, yes.
It's on that day.
Wednesday is remote.
Correct.
Wednesday's remote learning day, yes.
Should have had that instead of O-H, I guess. Okay, there.
And you guys, I hope, will come join us for the open house. I know you know you're always invited.
That's why we didn't know what night it was.
Yeah, tomorrow night, 5:30 to 7:00. I'll do, we'll do our presentation about 5:45. I'm also going to stick around, answer any questions that parents may have, some, some may want to ask me, you know, privately, and that's perfectly fine. And I just want to make this as smooth as possible, and make everybody come together as one as best we can, so everybody gets the instruction and gets the education that they even deserve.
Mr. Mazel, you said, so you were a coach at South Creek. Are any of the students, like the seniors, do they know you from those days?
Unfortunately, it's been nine years. But having said that, there are quite a few cousins, nephews, nieces. You know, I've had people that I hadn't seen in years that from Oak City, that are just so happy about me being in the seat. And I'm just, you know, like I say, I'm just one man, but I think you believe in a higher power. He puts you in a place for a reason, and I think this is my reason.
And, and I'm real happy about that. I think you're the perfect person to do that.
I hope so.
And I thank you for all the time and effort you put into this transition.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak on the office manager?
Yes. So, one of the things that me and Mr. Guard had actually kind of talked about, I really wanted a face in the front office, because South Creek representation was everywhere. It's at the front office. And we hit, I don't know how we did it, but I hit a home run. I got Talyria Powell. We'll be stationed in our front office. I worked with her at South Creek. She is a joy. If you don't know her, you need to get to know her. So, she will be a face for our South Creek parents when they come in the building, our students when they come in the building. She's well-known in the community down there, and I thought that was important. Everything we did, yeah, we're trying to strategically make sure they have somebody that they're familiar with.
So, she will, she will be, she's still is doing our Power School work that she's also always done, but she'll also be our office manager at Riverside High School, because we wanted to have that South Creek presence where our family's there as well.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Tell us a little bit about it, because I'm thinking that, so the South Creek.
Yes.
You don't know a lot about the area, by the way.
Yes, yes. So, school improvement teams typically are, had at least two representations of the parents. And we have our two from Riverside High, so I'm going to try to get two from South Creek. It's my understanding that they did not meet very often down there. There's a lot of turnover and different things that they had going on. So, it's almost kind of like restarting, but we will get representation. I've actually, I've got one person already, I mentioned a minute ago, that had already said she wanted to do anything to support. And I already said, we'd love to get you part of the support, you know, school improvement team. So, yeah, it's in the works. We will also be adding the South Creek staff, who was on the school improvement team. They will be on our school improvement team. Normally, your school improvement team is voted on at the beginning of the year. By law, it has to be, and approved. I'm assuming that South Creek did that, because they did have an acting sit team, so they will come and join ours and move. There's two different school improvement plans, because there's two different schools, but we're going to meet as one unit, and then we'll work on both the plans. It's, it's a lot of work, but it's worth it.
Well, I would go through, I would get the list that was on the advisory board, or.
Those advisory boards have not been active since 2016, '17. So, we'd be glad to get those lists, but, and I, when I heard that word last year at our end-of-year graduation, I started figuring that out.
The parents over there don't realize it's not existent anymore.
I don't think.
So, did they have two parents on the sit team at South Creek? We'll find that.
Correct. Well, if not, that's basically, basically.
So, open house, that would be a good time to let people.
Well, people go and sign up. They can, you know, we can, we can, yeah. Because I think, I think the advisory board basically has kind of become like the sit team, because they, we meet every month, and we make decisions for the whole school.
And, and, I mean, with us both being new, we can only go on what, you know, what's been shared with us in the past. But the bottom line is, we want our parents to be involved, and if there are parents from Riverside or South Creek.
And we know South Creek had a weakness on there, so that we really got to.
If we've got South Creek families that want to be involved, and if you don't, then we're going to find you, because we want you to be involved, and we want you to be a part of our school family.
That would be very good.
So, we want that. We welcome that. We want your voice at the table. Again, alone, we can do so little, but we come together.
Right.
We can change kids' lives every single. We can change kids' lives every single day.
Oh, we're going to try to have a PTA. Is that going out of high schools, like?
High schools, unfortunately, PTAs are very difficult to get going. Um, I came in August and then somebody, uh, y'all, y'all, we voted to get the merger rolling, so it's kind of like been everything. Like I have a PBIS model set up from Riverside High now. I've got to redo it, get the city team's input from South Creek.
Okay, so we're not, we're worried about that.
We're going to get it. I, I can't promise you it'll be.
Okay, no.
But I want to.
But if we have parents who want to be involved.
Yes.
Then we could.
And are willing to do this, we're ready. So, but a PTA should actually be parent-led. So if we've got parents out there who, who would love to lead the PTA, we're ready to work with them. It's just that, um, right now, the school is focused on giving every individual student the absolute best education we can this semester. Next year, some of those bigger ticket items that we know still need to be, we need to better our best on, like PTA, some of those other things will be at the top of the agenda. But if there are parents who want to support us in creating this name, we're ready. Come talk to us.
You know, put up a sign-up sheet, you know, like I said, that open house.
Yeah. If the merger does become something that we continue in August, I definitely will be a, a little bit better.
Mm-hmm.
Prepared. I, well, we would.
Well, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Our next item is the athletic transportation update. Coach McGill?
Good evening, everyone. As you all, um, coming for you all again, um, I just want to give you guys an update on the shuttle bus athletes. Here will be, I have Coach Wes Hughes, who's the athletic director for Martin County High Schools. Um, Crystal Horn is the athletic director for Martin Middle Schools. She was not able to be here to join us tonight. Just want to give you overview of how the shuttle bus works for our athletes. So what we have, back on June the nineteenth, we started some workouts. We were about to shuttle bus for all our athletes. And that shuttle bus picks the kids up from their home school and, and transports them wherever the practice is going to be. So for example, if we're practicing at Riverside High School, shuttle bus goes to South Creek High School, picks the kids up from South Creek High School, brings them to practice at Riverside High School. Once practice is over, we take the kids back to South Creek High School. We run a shuttle bus every day of the week that a practice or a game takes place.
Is that middle school and high school?
Yes, ma'am. We run a shuttle bus.
For sports?
For sports. Um, for middle school and high school, and during the fall, we had, I, I don't like reading from the bullets, so I'm just going to talk about, I'm going to cover everything on these bullets. In the fall, we had a lot of riders ride shuttle bus on game nights. For example, on a home football game, you had band, you had cheerleaders, um, the football players, and a lot of them rode, rode the bus. What's happening in the winter time is during basketball season, a lot of parents comes to the games. So what happens is, if it's a basketball game, a lot of the parents, the kids ride home with their parents. But the bus is always available to, for, for a child to ride. So what I, what we do is, we have a transportation road call we do at the end of practice. So we'll say, Coach, we use Coach Williams as a basketball coach, for example. But at the end of practice, he'll go around and ask the team, who needs a shuttle bus ride tomorrow night after the game? And he asks, he has a sheet, and he has a sign-up sheet. Therefore, Coach Hughes will call, let me know, and we'll, and we'll communicate with the shuttle bus driver tomorrow night. We need a shuttle bus, or we know we need a shuttle bus.
The school bus drivers, the shuttle bus drivers.
The shuttle bus driver asked the coaches, Ms. Cargill, you're looking at me and Co-, me and this guy right here, I can drive the route from here blindfolded.
One hundred percent.
One hundred percent. We drove this summer, to be honest with you, me and Dr. White told, I actually came later because we were driving the bus, it's like eight o'clock at night, taking kids back and forth. So we got about, I got about two or three coaches who had CDLs, who are very dedicated. So that's why it's very important for, we, we want the people to know, like I've had nights where we've had people say, I want to ride a shuttle bus. My driver is there, ready to go, and nobody comes out and rides the bus. Luckily, this, this person's a nice person and is very love to do it. He comes. So it's between me and, so we've been doing it. So I just want to let you guys know it's there, it's an option. Um.
But it's not being utilized, is that?
It, it's, it's used for practices, it's used every day. So for example, for basketball season, we have two gyms. So we don't want kids to have to wait all night to practice. So when the bell rings at Riverside High School, we have a bus driver who take it, say, let's say, Coach Williams' boys' basketball team is practicing at South Creek. It's a bus driver who's out back. They know shuttle bus is at three fifteen. Every Sunday night, we send out an email to all the coaches and let them know. They get on the shuttle bus, they go to South Creek. We also have, if they, if the girls are practicing at Riverside, we have a shuttle bus at Riverside who brings them to, at, at South Creek, brings them to Riverside. The same thing's going on in the middle school. We pick, so we have basically two shuttle buses on the road, basically one for the middle school and one for the high school, and we're rolling. We're rolling up and down these roads in Martin County.
Well, my question is, is it being utilized? So you have it there, but are, are, is it, are the students up there?
The students ride it on the way to practice and, and on, and the way back to practice. It's used for practices. On game nights, it's not used as much. It's not used as much.
Well, some of the parents, yeah.
Because a lot of their parents are at the game. So if, if, if you, if you come to watch a game, your child is playing, then you go take your child routes on the view. I think, um, like Friday night, we had five who said they needed to ride home, um, for the varsity game, and we ended up with one. But we. Yeah, we had one. So we took that one person home.
On the bus?
Yes. So we, we, we want parents, it's there. We don't want no parent to say, we, we don't want each child not to play a sport or activity because they don't have transportation. So it's, it's, it's awful. And what, what, what's happening is, if, what's happening is, Coach Hughes will tell you, a lot of the kids, they'll go home and they'll say, it was no bus, mom, it was no bus there.
Telling us.
And they, and they'll say that because.
They don't want to be by themselves.
They don't want to be by themselves. But I just want to let you.
Nobody on the shuttle bus.
Nobody, that's correct.
And then we have parents that think that we don't offer it on game nights.
That's correct, Ms. Cargill. But we, we're off, they just don't want to be a person, they don't want to be the only person on the bus. And it, and like I said, me and Coach Hughes has did a lot of driving.
Well, that's our three parents know at open house that we always take them home after the game.
And you have to have a shuttle bus driver, right?
Yes, we got shuttle bus drivers that, that we, that we, um, use a lot of times, and, and just depending on the person, individual's schedule, you know, who can do it, you know, we, but we always have a driver.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for me about shuttle bus transportation for our student athletes?
All right, very much.
Well, thank you all for all you did.
Yes, ma'am.
Our next item is action item, the Jamesville Elementary School fundraiser request.
Hello.
Hello.
We are requesting approval for a fundraiser for Jamesville Elementary. They're going to have a PTA, um, hot dog bingo, sorry, on January twenty-fifth, and the cards are a dollar a piece, and they're going to run fifteen rounds for this, it's PTA-directed, and they're going to have concessions with that, they'll drink and sex, with an estimated profit of three hundred dollars. And then we use some of this money for things like PTA incentives, playground benches, and basketball goals.
That's a good idea.
And this time I'd like to ask more people.
All right. Need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the PTA hot dog bingo for J E S.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve the Jamesville Elementary School fundraiser request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move the Martin County Board of Education enter closed session subject to advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one, A one and A six, to prevent the disposal of confidential personnel information under General Statute one fifteen C dash three nineteen, and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one, A three to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute one forty-three point three eighteen point one-one, A one, and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty U S C one-two-three-two G in North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash four-zero-two. The board also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one, A five.
All right, we have a motion for closed session. Is there a second?
No.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Close session, ready?
...